2020, even to present. We've had numerous committees. We've had eight virtual public meetings. And we've had forty-two subcommittee meetings. We've learned from knowledgeable people in community organizations, businesses, city and county, departments, education, workforce development, criminal justice, healthcare, social services, economic development, and housing as well. Third slide, please. We've also sought the expertise of more than twenty experts to inform our work. In December of 2021, we presented a report and the action plan to the city council, which provided a framework for the recommendations that also allowed us to give them information to help them to address equity concerns and to move forward with some practical solutions. Again, in the process of our study, there were areas that were directly related to the county and again being redundant, so we did notate those and created the information and all of the findings. And again, that's what we are bringing and allowing you to look at tonight. So tonight, we'll be sharing with you information about the findings and recommendations that are directly related to education, directly related to health, and also to criminal justice because we found that each of these areas are relevant to the quality of the services that even our great county provides, and we're certainly appreciative of those services. So tonight, you'll be hearing in the area of education from Mr. Jermaine White. He is a resident of Sanford-Lee County. He serves as assistant superintendent for the Hornet County School Systems. You'll also be hearing from attorney Fred Webb, a practicing attorney here for our city and our county. And you'll also be hearing from Dr. Von De Rees, who is a family nurse practitioner resident here in our city and county, and she serves at the Northmore Family Practice in Robbins, North Carolina. And having said that, at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Jermaine White to come and share with us in reference to education.
If we could get the slide to the education. I believe it's slide seven, it's seventeen.
Great. Thank you very much, Bishop Mallett. Before I begin this evening, I would like to say as a quick sidebar, I was very impressed with the youth representatives that came before you this evening. They are such a great representation of everything that is right with Lee County. So outstanding job with what they've done, and the future of our county is certainly in good hands. Good evening Chairman Smith and members of the board. As I begin tonight, I would like for you to reference the education findings in the full report on page seventeen. The task force found that Lee County students face significant economic disadvantages. For example, in Lee County High School and Southern Lee High School, more than fifty percent of students identify as economically disadvantaged. This means that students are facing adversity and may need to work jobs in order to support their families. Can we go to the next slide, please? When you examine the data on how many of our youth are actually going to college, you can see how numbers are low particularly for historically underrepresented communities. The task force found a need to address suspensions and disciplinary actions in schools. African-American students in North Carolina public schools are four-point-one times more likely than their white counterparts to receive short-term suspensions, which can increase a child's involvement with the criminal justice system, as Attorney Webb will touch on later on in his presentation. Next slide, please. The Lee County Promise Program at Central Carolina Community College offers free tuition for eligible graduating high school students, but there are very low enrollment rates for students of color. A graph shows enrollment in the last three years by race and ethnicity, and you can see that black students have a very low rate, only three percent in 2019. The task force found that many people in the community are not aware of the program and its benefits. We found that people from underprivileged backgrounds do not have family or other connections to support them to undertake college or technical training. Also, students may be disincentivized to enter a program or take the required courses during high school at a place where very few of their peers are currently attending. As a task force, we understand that initial funding was guaranteed through 2022 and that current discussions are underway for future funding to continue this program. Lee County Promise is a great opportunity, and if continued, there's a greater need to support people from underprivileged backgrounds to enter this program. We also found that school counselors and staff, who are the gateways into Central Carolina Community College programs, do not reflect the demographics of the community they serve. The task force found significant underrepresentation in teaching, administration, administration and other staff positions in the Lee County schools. For example, during the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year, seventy-eight percent of all employees were white, even though fifty-eight percent of the county population identifies as such. The next slide shows disparities in school leadership as well. In the 2020, 2021 school year, seventy-eight percent of Lee County school administrators identified as white. To address these disparities, the task force made a number of recommendations related to education. First, the task force recommends that the city, county collaborate with Lee County schools to organize a state-of-the-schools public forum with principals to provide information and answer questions about poverty, resource allocation, and school discipline rates. Secondly, we recommend that the city and county collaborate with Lee County schools to adopt measures to diversify staff. This includes supporting networks for educators of color, providing professional development that fosters inclusive school environments, creating new entry points into the school system based on models with proven success, and finally, sharing job postings with the Sanford Equity Communications Network and historically black colleges and universities. Now, we will invite task force member attorney Fred Webb to present our recommendations related to criminal justice. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, good evening to the county commissioners, all of you all. I want to say good evening to each and every one of you. I want to thank you for your commitment to youth, as well as the commitment to the Parks and Recreation Department that you all have made a decision to overtake, which I think is very critical, not only to criminal justice, but is also critical to the development and the growth of this community that we live in. Again, I live at 5507 Swan Station Road here in Sanford, North Carolina. I've been a practicing attorney for over thirty years. My primarily folk, my primary focus is right now is high-level felonies, capital murder, death penalty cases is what I do. So I get a chance to see the ills of society and what the failure of a community to take on such issues that we're discussing tonight were due to individuals. First, I would like to say the Criminal Justice section in the full report is located on page ten for your reference. The task force found that criminal justice is an important area of concern for Lee County and Sanford. It is a place where we can make improvements that can decrease poverty, build community trust, and create and maintain a better quality of living environment for all of our residents. One of the things that we as a task force found that there are not enough opportunities for adolescents between the ages of twelve and seventeen in Sanford and Lee County, which is why I commend you for taking over the Parks and Recreation Department and giving it some growth. We know that preventing childhood, preventing adverse childhood experiences by connecting youth to caring adults and activities such as mentoring and after-school programs decreases crimes, and it also decreases violence. Adult supervision is critical between the times of 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM when youth crime and violence peaks. Now, I'd also like to say that basically, not only does it peak, but it also provides opportunities for youth crime and violence to occur at later times in the night or early in the morning. The next slide, please. The task force recommends that the city and county partner together to create an accessible youth center for recreation and mentoring programs in Sloan Park on Bragg Street, downtown Jonesboro, or the Kendale Shopping Center. Also, that we unite the Lee County Parks and Recreation Commission and the Sanford City Parks Commission. Together, we can plan for parks serving adolescents in high-density, low-income neighborhoods. This is important to me because I grew up in a low-income neighborhood where we had baseball teams in our community, and then with decentralization, then the baseball teams moved out, and I no longer had the opportunity to play baseball as a child. Because the baseball teams moved out so far from where I lived, my parents worked every day, two parents worked, and they could not get us to baseball practice because of that move. The next slide, please. The task force also investigated strategies for decriminalizing poverty. We found that there is a perpetual cycle of devastating outcomes that results from an individual's ability to pay traffic court fines and also traffic fees. But people continue to drive, and because they have to continue to drive to get a job out of necessity, they can receive more serious criminal charges and more fines and fees when they fail to pay. A judge generally issues an arrest warrant on a financial bond for that same incident, which requires that a defendant pay a sum of money before appearing in court or be jailed. So as a result, our court schedule and the way that our court schedule works in this county could cause them to remain in jail for days or weeks. And so in essence, if they don't pay $250, they'll be housed in the county jail for any time from a week to ten, or sometimes two weeks. I've even represented people who have been in jail for thirty days because of their inability to pay court fines as related to traffic costs and such things. And so the inability to pay because of poverty increases your chances of being arrested and or losing your job, which in turn impacts the household. We found that as of February 2021, three thousand seventy-eight people had suspended licenses because of unpaid traffic fines in Lee County. Forty-eight percent of those people are black, twenty-one point six percent of those people are Latino, and twenty-six point five percent of those individuals are white. The average length of unpaid tickets, believe it or not, is eight years. Additionally, the task force also found that in Lee County, financial bonds account for seventy-eight percent of bonds issued for misdemeanor charges, which is an extremely incredible high amount for people who are charged with a misdemeanor. And so in essence, what happens is they go to get charged with a misdemeanor larceny, they get put on a cash bond or a secured bond, they cannot make that bond. And as a result, they lose their jobs, they lose the abilities for them to take care of their kids because of the devastating impact that it has on being locked up for four or five, sometimes ten days. Some people have been being locked up for thirty days. We also found that seventy-five, seventy-nine percent of those bonds are issued for felony charges. In essence, an officer can also issue a citation to appear in court in lieu of arresting a person for misdemeanors and infractions. So instead of a law enforcement officer finding a person who may have committed shoplifting or misdemeanor larceny at a store, instead of arresting them, they can cite them for court. But we see that the pattern in North, the pattern in Lee County is that instead of citing them, they charge them, bring them down to the magistrate and put them in jail. So the task force identified the connection between these criminal justice practices and persistent equity issues in the city of Sanford. Not only do driver's license suspensions and jail time impact jobs, but a criminal record also impacts a person's household and current and future employment opportunities. So the task force found that Lee County could assist with the elimination of traffic court debt, restore driver's licenses, and release low-risk defendants who cannot pay their bonds. The task force also found that the city could implement ban-the-box fair hiring policies that prohibit employers from asking individuals criminal history during initial stages of an employment decision process. So in essence, what that does is a person can make it through until they get to the final part, criminal background check is done, and then a decision then can be made about whether to hire them based on what they saw in the interview. Whereas currently, as it sits, if you say that you've been convicted of a low-level felony or any type of felony, then you automatically are not considered for a job. So now, I'd like to thank you and now invite task member Dr. Von De Rees to present our recommendations related to health.
This task force found that health was a very important focus. If you will refer to page twenty-two of your report, the task force found that seventeen percent of Sanford's population is uninsured, and twenty-two percent of the population is living in poverty. As the graph on your slide indicates, of those without health insurance coverage, forty-one percent are Latino, more than twenty percent are black, and more than eleven percent are white. With the African-American population in Lee County earning wages at an average of almost half that of white residents, this population is disproportionately affected. As you can see, there is a disparity in the ability to access quality healthcare. Also, there is a lack of mental health providers in Lee County. Therefore, most referrals are made out of county. And with no public transportation in Lee County, those affected are at even more of a disadvantage. Addiction and abuse are serious problems in Lee County and in Sanford, reflecting a nationwide opioid crisis. I was glad to see the young people had an interest and saw the need for some intervention in substance abuse in the youth of this county. Opioid overdoses in Lee County more than doubled in the spring of 2021. Risk factors for addiction and abuse include homelessness, isolation, job loss, poverty, and all of these areas were concerns addressed by this task force. The task force recommends the city work with partners to create an affordable community care clinic with a health liaison and a health navigator. The task force recommends that the city collaborate with the county to require law enforcement and other first responders to complete sensitivity trainings for interacting with people struggling with drug addiction, also to work with schools to develop age-appropriate training and education curriculum on addiction and substance use for classrooms, also to develop and implement awareness campaign or education workshops in addiction and substance use for the community. The task force also recommends collaboration with COLT to expand transportation services to the, to health services for underinsured and uninsured people. To read more specific actions for COLT, please refer to page twenty-two of your report. And now, I want to give you back to our facilitator, Bishop Mallett.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, team. Again, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and also to our county manager. Your willingness to provide initiative driven by the city to come before you with its findings and to share some of them with you that are relative to the county, it speaks volumes of how we believe that you are concerned about the residents, not only of our city, but also of our county. And for that, again, ladies and gentlemen, we are extremely appreciative for your time. And you do have the report, and any questions that we could help you with, we're willing to answer tonight. And please know that any assistance that we could provide and help you with any of these areas, if you deem them necessary, please know that we're willing and able to assist and work with you. Thank you again very much for your time.
Thank you, Bishop Mallett. Any questions of Bishop Mallett? Commissioner Lovick?
No, I don't have any. I don't have any questions, but I'd just like to thank Bishop Mallett for facilitating this, this group. And I was looking at the roster here, and y'all got an impressive roster. So thank everyone of you for what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you. And all, everyone on that roster was respectfully vetted by the city through a process that they use to select them. People were free to sign up and submit an application to be a part of it, and I was honored and privileged to be able to work with each of these individuals. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovelli?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
I just want to say also, thank you for being here. There's a lot of work to be done, a lot of thinking to be done, and anything that we can do to encourage dialogue and trying to better understand your perspective and maybe mature ours is appreciated. So I thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. That's awfully thoughtful, and that speaks volumes, sir. Thank you for that comment.
And Bishop Mallett, I was just looking over the task force members because we discussed issues with schools, and I noted that no one from Lee County schools were here, with the exception of the school counselor, Mina Academy.
Yes, but please be known to this committee that our superintendent of schools, Dr. Brandt, was extremely helpful, him and central office. I was privileged myself, along with Mayor Pro Tem Councilman Buckles, to have a lengthy discussion with him in reference to these areas, and he made not only his staff but himself available to us and was very much interested in being an integral part of whatever is needed to go forth to deal with these issues. So our local school system and its staff were thoroughly represented in this process.
Okay. I'm sorry. I just was looking at the list.
Oh, no, no. We had, like, they were like, we had forty-two subcommittee meetings, and all different professionals came, and so everybody wasn't able to serve on the task force, but I'm grateful that our city and our county residents all stepped up to the plate and said, you know, whatever we can do to look at these concerns and work together to see how we can improve the quality of life for our city and our county, we were very happy to have that. And again, being redundant, our local school system and Dr. Brandt's office was thoroughly involved and a part of educating us too.
Attorney Webb, if you could, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
As I understand, now, take it from me, there was a couple of us who were on the board at the time that the judge and his entire staff came down to let us know about the courthouse. But that being said, I do know where my boundaries are as far as the Board of Commissioners. I'm not sure how we have any say on driver's license suspension, unpaid traffic fines, courts, bails, and bonds.
You, you don't have a direct say in it at all. However, as citizens and as leaders of this community, I think that people can stress their concerns to those who do, which in turn means that it can be addressed in an indirect way. One of the things that I'd reminded the city of is that basically, you all control housing, and you can make an impact by some of the housing policies you make as it relates to people who are at poverty and involved in crime to some extent, to lessen the impact on families. So, so one of the things that could be encouraged, and I believe that, that our sheriff would work with me on that, as well as the prosecutor, the district attorney for this district, as well as the clerk, is that we do a clinic to try to help these individuals to clear up these, this backlog so people can get their driver's license and they drive properly and legally, because people have to work since we don't have a transportation system.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And kind of touching in that area, and you, you can stay there. We have law enforcement officers that attend crisis intervention training, both at the city and the sheriff's department, and we've had some of our correction. Your department, some of your members have been there, attending that class. It's a week-long course, forty hours, and it's pretty intense.
Yes, sir.
And that again goes right along with dealing with individuals struggling with drugs, drug addiction, and as well as mental issues.
Yes, sir. And one of the things that I can say, because I have a lot of experience with people with mental crises in the jail, most of the time, I'm struggling trying to find a treatment location, as Dr. Rees has talked about. I just sent two kids, most lawyers may not do it, but I worked and worked and worked until I got two kids in a, in a facility in Winston-Salem. That's how far they have to go, because we have nothing here. It's almost a desert. And so I have one kid that went to Florida because his parents couldn't afford. But that is what's going on, and if we don't do anything about mental health, as Dr. Rees has talked about, the crisis is only going to get worse in the jail. And with that, we have more people spending time at the hospital with them. And I've been over to the mental holding facility at Central Carolina Hospital to see individuals, and it is not a pleasant sight. And so, so I don't know how we address it, but at least we can get the conversation going about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And no other questions for the Board of the Commission? I want to say thank you very much for the Equity Task Force presentation. The information was very helpful, and there are things that we can interact with as well. All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consider initial offer to purchase the 1004 South Third Street.
Yes, sir. The county and city own that lot as a result of foreclosure sale in 2017. The tax value of the property is nine thousand, and the amount of taxes and fees owed on the property is eleven thousand, nine forty-four and fifty-five cents. The county has received an offer in the amount of seven thousand dollars. Just now, asking the board to declare the property surplus, and then we can advertise it utilizing the upset bid procedure, but it does have to go to the city because it has not been to the city for either then to accept the offer or deed their interest in the property to the county, which is typically what they do.
Do I hear a motion? Motion been made to consider initial offers, offer to purchase 1004 South Third Street, pin number nine six five two zero six two seven six eight zero zero. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is request to grant a thirty-foot temporary emergency access easement to the MAD M and R LLC.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll take this one. The owners of the property met with the president of the community college and myself several weeks ago to discuss this option for the development of this property. After some, some review, we made the suggestion that they approach the city to make sure that they were okay with this alternative. And so the city signed off on it as an alternative so they can go ahead and get started with the project. The easement is temporary, and it's temporary until the Kelly Drive relocation is completed. Hopefully, the project will be let in July of 2024, and then they can connect and have their second way in and out of their residential neighborhood. So the city fire department will get a key to the two gates that they'll have to go through to access the property. It's not uncommon for them to have those keys, so we're recommending approval of it.
Any questions of the manager regarding the temporary easement? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion been made to grant a thirty-foot temporary emergency access easement to the MAD M and R LLC. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Lee County Project, 4837-0122, Lee County Horton Pool Bathhouse renovation award recommendation. Mr. Santiago, how are you, sir?
Great, sir. Thank you. Good evening, sir. Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Crompton. After a competitive bid process conducted with assistance of McGillan Associates, Project 4837-0122, for a Lee County Horton Pool Bathhouse renovation, we are recommending to be awarded to J.M. Thompson in the amount of seven hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. McGillan Associates has conducted a review and assesses the JMT is fully qualified to fulfill the requirements of this project that's indicated in the bid documents. So we are requesting the Project 4837-0122, Lee County Horton Pool Bathhouse renovation be awarded to J.M. Thompson in that amount. We're also requesting to authorize the chair to sign contracts after legal review, updating federal, we're in process of updating federal contract provisions to ensure compliance with uniform guidance, and the contractors must agree to follow that federal guidance and provisions.
Any questions of Mr. Geraldo?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to point out that it was recommended that this project be broken up into the pool contract, into the bathhouse contract by the engineer, two different types of construction, and, you know, it saves us having a contractor over the pool and paying that GC fee over it. So that's why I broke it up. It's also broken up because of recommendations we're making to go ahead and fund both these projects with the American to go ahead and fund both these projects with the American Refuge, Rescue Plan Act and funds. And be happy to answer any questions about that. I know there, there were a few. This project does, both projects qualify for the piece of the funds that we're gonna reserve, we have to reserve over the ten million that fall under the uniform guidance compliance. We'll talk a little bit about more, more about the ten million that we've been essentially be able to pull out of that and use a little bit more freely. Still have to follow rules. But be happy to answer any questions on that and why we're recommending that.
Any questions of the manager regarding the project on the bath house? Seeing there are no questions, do I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the request of Project 848370122, Lee County Horton Pool Bath House renovation in the amount of seven hundred thousand one, excuse me, seven hundred one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to be awarded to the J.M. Thompson Company. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Lee County Project 48370222, Lee County Horton Pool renovation award recommendation. Mr. Geraldo.
Yes, sir, thank you. Again, after a competitive bid process conducted with assistance of McGillan Associates, Project 48370222 for the Lee County Horton Pool renovation, we are recommending to be awarded to Southeast Aquatics Group in the amount of five hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and nine dollars. McGillan Associates has conducted a review and assesses the Southeast Aquatics Group is fully qualified to fulfill the requirements of this project as indicated in the bid documents. Again, we're requesting that Project 48370222 for the Lee County Horton Pool renovation be awarded to Southeast Aquatics. And we're also requesting to authorize the chair to sign a contract after legal review, excuse me, is conducted, which is updating federal contract provisions to ensure company, compliance with uniform guidance. And contractors might, must also agree to adhere to federal provisions.
Any questions, Mr. Geraldo?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion's been made to approve the request for Project 48370222, Lee County Horton Pool renovation in the amount of five hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred and nine dollars be awarded to Southeast Aquatics Group A. And I just want to share with you, the city is very, very much appreciative of the efforts we're doing with our parks and rec and especially with the Horton Pool project. So thank you very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the item, Project 483802R21, change order request.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Lastly, during demolition and preparation phases for Project 483802R21, which is our Lee County Government Parking Lot renovation, it was identified that there were over four hundred and forty square yards of unsuitable soils, which really had to be removed as the parking lot had collapsed. And we also had a collapsed pipe and organic matter, which is just roots, you know, when they initially did the parking lot, they cut the trees out and let the root ball in, then they just paved over it. So over time, that became sinkholes. And then we had a collapsed pipe. So we really had no choice in this matter. We had to move forward. We had a contractor survey team on site, which we were able to work with them and obtain the passing grade on everything. So we were able to finish the job. But at the end of the day, we were left with the change orders. So we are requesting the change orders one, five, and six to this Project 483802R21 to the Lee County Government Center Parking Lot renovation be awarded in the cost of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and seven dollars, please.
These funds come from the bond funds that are already in place to renovate the local government center.
That's correct.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion's been made to approve the change order request regarding the project of Lee County Government Center Parking Lot renovations in the amount of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the adjustment to the Lee County purchasing and contracting policy.
Good evening. As part of our review and getting ready to start spending some of the ARPA funds, we went through and reviewed our procurement policy, our purchasing and contract policy. And if you look on page two-ten, I have tried to summarize our policy and the different categories we have to look at. And in doing so, we discovered we had a small gap in construction or repair work policy in the formal bid range at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The uniform guidance requires formal bidding and our policy was at three hundred thousand. So we're asking that the board adjust our policy to start the formal bidding for construction and repair work at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In addition, we noticed that we did not have a civil rights policy built into our contracting and purchasing policy. So if you look on page two-seventeen, you will see the proposed addition there for the civil rights policy that we're asking you to add. Be glad to answer any questions you may have. As I've said in the abstract, we try to keep our policy as restrictive or more restrictive than uniform guidance and state law. So that's easy for the staffs to follow.
Motion's been made to approve the county purchasing and contracting policy so that it will align with the uniform guidance, Part 200. Any discussion? Any questions?
When we get questions regarding how to apply, who do we refer to?
Finance Department.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the adjustment in Lee County purchasing and contracting policy say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is the update on the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, a coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds final review. Oh, my word.
I am happy to say that we have the final rule finally. It is multiple pages. I think it's in excess of four hundred pages, four hundred and thirty-seven to be exact.
And we're gonna cover them all tonight.
Jen has been very much trying to dig through it, but we've played, through the assistance of the school government, we have been able to pull out some important facts, one being one Dr. Crumpton just referred to. That's the most important change that's come about. And that's the ten million dollar standard allowance under revenue loss. Prior to the final rule, under the interim rule, to spend money under the revenue loss category, you had to actually show a loss. While the interim final rule was being vetted and final rule developed, there was a federal bill introduced to possibly give us some ten, this ten million dollars authority. Instead of that bill being pursued, they worked it into the final rule. So to be able to take the standard allowance, we do not have to show an actual loss. However, it is a revocable choice. The funds can be used for general government services, and you can see there's a list provided for you there of things we can use it for. It can be used for maintenance, Pago funding of building of infrastructure, modernization of cybersecurity, health services, and environmental, environmental remediation, or provision of police, fire, and other public safety services. Again, all other award terms, uniform guidance still applies. So the biggest thing for us is this will give us a lot more flexibility in what we can do moving forward with the ARPA funds. And some of the restrictions will be lessened because we can go under the revenue loss category. And we'll be talking to you more about that on Friday. Again, what's allowed under this will be internal local government operations, that impact ability to provide services, and expenditures that are providing those services. Things that are not allowed will be pension fund contributions. And that doesn't mean that if we move, charge salaries to the fund that we can't pay our normal retirement contributions. That is allowable. This would be a one-time funding of a pension fund contribution. We cannot use it for debt service of borrowing money. We cannot build financial reserves with it. We cannot use it for any settlement, judgment, or consent degrees. We cannot use the funds for anything that undermines or discourages compliance with CDC. We cannot do it to anything that colla, um, excuse me, violates conflict of interest or violates state or federal laws and regulations, including the uniform guidance. The treasury, other changes in addition to the ten thousand is the treasury will not require prior approval for capital expenditures over five thousand. There is now a one million dollar threshold of which reporting is required for capital projects. We also gathered clarification on low and moderate income items in the rule, provided greater flexibility with terminations of eligibility and the use of capital expenditures with restrictions. So before we go into questions, I will explain again, it's a one-time irrevocable allocation. We can do up to ten thousand. Of course, we were receiving closer to twelve million, so two million or just under two million dollars, we still have to spend in other categories of which we have already allocated some. And after we get down to the project ordinance tonight for the pools, you will only have like a hundred and forty-four thousand. That's unencumbered under those areas. And we can take care of that through the continuation of this waterhouse's salary over the term of the grant.
Ten million.
Excuse me?
Ten million. You said ten thousand.
Sorry. I apologize.
Just want to make sure.
Sorry.
They know it's ten million.
Anyway, so we would recommend at this time that the board go ahead and move ahead with the ten million dollar allocation. We have to make it on our next report, which is due January thirty-first. So we have that report pretty much ready to be filed if we get the board's approval to make that election tonight.
Motion's been made to authorize staff to select a ten million dollar standard allowance that is offered in the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Any discussion? Any questions? Commissioner Love?
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Love?
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner, Commissioner LaBelle? Commissioner Connect? Sorry, Commissioner Carver left you at last.
The, the, when you go ahead and say that you're going to use the pool fund, for example, in the non-standard, what's it called, non-standard choice or whatever selection? Okay, does that lock you in forever? In other words, can you go ahead and use that money if, if we develop some sort of interest in using the other category? Can you move it back and forth between the ten million and the other?
We should be able to move it into the ten million if we need to do something else in one of the other category, in that, as other categories. However, the revenue loss category, we can pretty much structure almost anything, I won't say almost anything. We can do a lot of structuring to make projects work in that category that would still have worked in the others.
And maybe a better way to pose the question is that we understand the issue well enough to know that we're not losing any flexibility by, by reporting the way we're reporting.
Correct. We feel like we are gaining flexibility in doing this.
And your intention is to ask for the full ten million dollars, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion's been made. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then the next item is?
The grant project ordinance, amendment number two. We are coming before you to ask that you approve this grant project ordinance. This ordinance allocates the Corona State Local Federal Recovery Funds in the amount of, let me try to say this right, one million, three hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. That is broken down as seven hundred and seventy-two thousand for the bath house and six hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for the pool renovation. That is based on the contracts you just awarded, plus a ten percent contingency for each project. And that would then leave a ten million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars unassigned, of which ten million we would be putting under the standard allowance.
Any questions? Do I have a motion? Motion's been made to approve the CSL F R F Grant Project Ordinance Amendment two A to provide funds for the Horton Bath House renovation and the Horton Pool renovation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Could I ask for discussion on that motion?
Discussion. Yes, sir.
A, a couple of things. First of all, I'm, I'm in favor of this, of this motion. I think it's a good idea to provide the funds for this well-deserved project. One, one thing that I would ask us to do is in the future, we're in the process of trying to decide a priority on how to spend these funds. And rather than continue a process where we kind of just consider an issue and then see that ARPA funding could, could support it, we go ahead and go with that. And not questioning the fact that that was a good application of the money. But what I would prefer is if we think of doing this in a way of identifying all the issues that we, all the potential ways we could spend the money, set a priority on it and then work to recognize whichever, whichever events we think are most worthy, rather than kind of do it nickel dime as we go along. It's just an idea that, that recognizes the fact that twelve million dollars is a lot of money, but it's not infinite. And I'd like to make sure that it goes to the projects that we really would like to have done. The other question is that in this process, we have a way of supplanting funds. And if I understand that correctly, not all the one point three million dollars ultimately is going to be credited to the, the, the ARPA funds. And, and maybe, Lisi, you could explain that, why the, why there's a difference between the one million and the three point four thousand, four hundred thousand or whatever.
Okay. Want to make sure I understood what you were saying. Of the one million, three forty-seven, that's two separate projects. So each of those will be charged fully to the ARPA project. The supplanting is, under the revenue loss, there is the ability to supplant. So what the envision at this point in time is that we would be able to move some general fund expenditures, potentially public safety salaries is what I'm tentatively looking at, based on approval from the board down the road, to the ARPA project funds. That would free up those funds in the general fund to allow us to move ahead with some projects that will then be less restrictive on agreements and all that we have to draft. In other words, we would not have to go out and necessarily develop subrecipient policies and do subrecipient monitoring to the level that ARPA would require. It may also open up projects for you that we could do in some of the areas outside the Q C T without us having to spend a lot of the funds on going out and showing the need and all that was required under ARPA. In other words, we would still have to abide by any state and local laws for anything we do. So we still have to look at that in any funding mechanism we do. But it allows us greater flexibility. Whereas if we had wanted to do, as an example, if we want to do something at Kiwanis Children's Park, it is just outside the Q C T. Or if we want to do something at Kiwanis Family Park, we would have had to, if we strictly do it through the ARPA funds, we would have to go out and show increased usage during the COVID period or things like that. Things that we don't track our number of people coming in and out of those parks. A suggestion was, look at your trash that's collected. We don't track that either. But with this, we could easily move public safety salaries to the ARPA fund and then be able to go do some other projects.
And on this particular project, Mr. Carver, you asked about the million. We had already allocated a million dollars of fund balance to the pool. That million dollars is being allocated back to the general fund. So, you know, the commissioners can do what they want with that one million dollars. We're, we're going to put it back in the general fund. Now, it wasn't one point three, you know, four, five million dollars because we, when we had the discussion, when we projected the project would come in above the million dollars, the commissioners agreed to add three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars to the, to the project. And that money, at that time, the motion and the discussion was to add, to add that money using the ARPA funding if allowed. So we never allocated three hundred thousand from the general fund into the capital project fund. So that's why it's a million coming back and not one point three million coming back.
The one aspect of this that I want to make sure that I understand is that that one million dollars that was originally obligated from the general fund now is, is being maintained, shall we say. now is, is being maintained, shall we say? And we remember now that that could be used to promote other things through the ARPA funding kind of concept, right? So, so we haven't, as far as we have a lot of flexibility in how we're using the money, but still we have to remember which ones, how we, how we divided it as we went. And what I'm suggesting is that possibly it would be helpful to have some sort of an accounting of these funds that are being supplanted so that we realize that in the end we have 12 million dollars that we're using for these kind of projects.
We will.
Am I, am I making it clear what I'm trying to say?
And, and, you know, of course, the board does, once you're, once you're finished supplanting, you don't have to spend that 11 million dollars either.
Right. The one thing that I, I guess what I'm thinking of is you, you made the comment that it's up to the commissioners now to decide what to do with that. I'm just hoping the understanding is that it's still the million dollars that's going to be used toward the kind of projects that we're talking about.
That million dollars is not restricted to that. That million dollars was straight transferred from the general fund. The only thing that would be restricted to the ARPA use would be the 10 million that you've done, that you've approved to be the standard allowance. The million dollars was transferred before ARPA was ever came about.
But if they supplant, you know, if you, using your example for the sheriff deputy salaries.
Right, that 10 million would be.
You're supplanting general fund money, and that general fund money comes back to the fund balance.
When we go to deciding on priorities and the total amount of money we want to spend in this category.
Yes, sir.
We haven't spent in concept the 1 million dollars that we are relieving the general fund of responsibility for, correct?
That's why I said 11 million dollars. Because it's the 10 million of, of the, of the ARPA funding that is in general, whatever that's called, plus the million that's coming back.
That, that's good. It's still, it, 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 our choice is how we're going to move that money. But the agreement that we talked about before was that it would still be preserved in that arena of, of projects that we're thinking of for the ARPA funding. That's why I'm making up. Thank you, appreciate that.
One thing I forgot to mention earlier, and this goes back to something Mr. Carver mentioned. At your spot, each of you, I laid down a Lee County unofficial project list. This is a list of projects that we have garnered from the letter that we received early on from S3 when the ARPA funds were being considered. Department heads, staff, and we also reviewed the survey results that we've gotten so far for project ideas. And there is, we have developed this list. And we are asking that before Friday morning, you go through and rate each project either one through five, based on how you feel about the project, whether there be no interest, little interest, we'll consider a contender or a top priority for you. If you will return these to me by Friday morning at the retreat or Thursday night, Jen will be spending her time Friday morning, putting them all in a spreadsheet and getting the scores for each project. And we hope that this will start that day, later in the day, a discussion when we talk about ARPA yet again, for us to start narrowing down projects or for you to bring any additional projects, ideas to us that day. We do have, you know, a timeframe to have to spend the money in. So we would like to start getting some more sincere thoughts as to what you consider priorities so that then we can continue to vet the projects and start collecting costs so that we can come to you with a reasonable list of things and then y'all can pick from those. So we will hopefully be able to stop piecemealing what we're bringing to you. Any questions regarding that?
Do they have that list?
Yes, they each have that list at their spot along with the PowerPoint that I presented tonight.
The motion still is open. Any further discussion?
I got one quick question. On the list you just talked about, ventilation improvements. Do we have any more COVID money that we could apply to this project?
To the ventilation?
Yeah.
This, that one is a generic ventilation improvements. And outside the ARPA money, no. All of our CARES Act that we got earlier from the state is gone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Any other questions? All those in favors to approve the CSL F R grant project ordinance amendment 2A to provide funds to the Horton Bath House renovation and the Horton Pool renovation. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. One more?
You're still here.
I'm sorry. I apologize for taking up so much of your time. You have before you the monthly financial report through the month of December 2021. As I always remind you, sales tax runs three months behind. As far as tax collections as a percentage budget through December 2021, we are 5.82% ahead of the same time period last year. It appears that people missed, definitely made sure they paid their taxes earlier this year. We'll see where we stand at the end of January to see if it's overall stays in good situation, if we're about the same timeframe then. In reviewing expenditures, our target's 50% at that point. We have that three departments who are over finance, strategic services, and IT. Finance is overdue to the annual cost of the audit, so that will start leveling out as we proceed through the year. Strategic services is overdue to maintenance contracts. And IT is overdue to annual maintenance contracts and equipment purchases. You will also find attached the quarterly report for our capital projects through December 31st, 2021. And you will also see the status of the American Rescue Plan Fund as of December 31st, 2021. And then you also have the report showing sales tax collections through October 2021. Our numbers are still looking very good. I think what we're seeing though, if you look, you'll see there's some major difference between Article 39 sales tax and Articles 40 and 42. Remember, the Article 39 along with Article 46 is based on point of sale. And I think what we're starting to see is the people going back to work. And they're starting to shop again outside the county instead of doing so much online shopping like they were doing in the peak of the COVID and everybody was at home working. So while our numbers are still good, we are starting to see some fluctuation there. So no, don't mean to be alarming, I'm just pointing that out so you try to be transparent. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about any of the reports.
Any questions of Lisa? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
You have been very busy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next item on the agenda is managers' monthly report for January, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I didn't bring it up during the Equity Task Force discussion, but we do have a, a meeting at the retreat on Friday with the community college president to discuss the college promis-- promise program. So it would be a good time to bring up the findings of the Equity Task Force at that time. And since we need to renew that contract, might be a good time to talk about putting something like that in that contract. Just a point of, while I still remember that. So we have a lot going on.
If I could interrupt you. I just want to interrupt you because that came up. Meg Moss brought that up and was asking members of the meeting, issue is it about our family promise? Nobody knew what it was. And these were all business leaders and members of the community. So we have an issue with the, with the Lee County Promise.
Yeah, the, the marketing, counseling, advertising is a, is a major issue right now. And I, and I have discussed that with the president, and she is addressing it. But it'd be another good thing to discuss on Friday with her. You know, free college tuition is free college tuition. You get your first two years free, or you can graduate after two years with a certificate and go straight to work. Quite, quite the deal. So, you know, we're one of, you know, three counties. Chatham County and Harnett County all followed our lead and, and jumped in on it as well. So that's $750,000 between the, the three jurisdictions for scholarships in this area. Yes, sir.
Either one of those counties provided a report, been provided a report, how it's doing?
I'm, I'm sure Dr. Chapman has that. I'll ask her to bring those numbers with her.
We'd like to take a look at it.
Okay. How, how they're doing.
I couldn't hear. Okay, yeah, yeah, great.
All right, Magnetti Morelli, our life at this point, the building next door. On February 8th, we have two times that the commissioners can come by the building and walk through. One is 10 o'clock AM and, and the other is 1 o'clock PM. I will tell you, Robbie and, and his crew who we put in there to clean up that facility, it is amazing what that facility looks like today compared to when the company left. Y'all will enjoy the facility, those that can attend. The presses attend, obviously, because I, I believe we're going to have a majority of the board there, and we'll definitely have a majority of the, of the board of trustees there. I don't think we all completely understand how massive the facility is. The main complex is huge. Now that it's empty, it just looks like a huge cave. I mean, it's, it's, it's ginormous. So it'll be interesting to talk to them, find out, you know, what kind of plans they have, and then try to get some things moving along there. Our big obstacle, as we've always discussed, is the hazardous waste permit. But we're getting closer and closer to having a plan. And we feel confident that after we execute that plan, the community college will be able to occupy the facility. Parks and Rec projects, Phase 1 master plans are complete. The final walkthrough was on January 19th last week. There's still a couple of things that need to be cleaned up. The contractors agreed to resurface the courts at Kiwanis Children's Park. The ones, the lower, what I call the lower tennis courts, need to be resurfaced. They're also going to redo the Temple basketball courts. There were some crackings, some things that already started, and they agreed to address that. We're now reviewing Phase 2 at Kiwanis Children's, Temple, and OT Sloan Parks, because there are some funds remaining in the bond fund. Lisa's going to give you a, a complete rundown of the park projects, the local, the government center, and the courthouse complex on Friday to show you where we are in spending on those projects, because we are going to have some money left over, which is a good thing. That means Santiago did a great job managing the projects and keeping those contingencies from popping up. We had one that we had to pay for tonight, but we did not have a lot of those things pop up. And we were very fortunate in that regard. The courthouse project is, should be completed by March 1st. Right now, they're finishing up the judges' chambers, the jury room, grand jury room, and the magistrate's courtroom. So that should be finished soon. Work continues in the government center. We're hoping to be completed in 90 days. That is quite the project. All the parking lot projects are complete. We still have some security gates and a few things to install, but the, the work with the contractors is complete.
On the one over on Portland?
Yes, sir.
We have sprinklers out there?
I don't think so, no, sir.
You got a water bucket? That grass is going to?
Yes, sir. In the, in the spring, we're going to need to figure out a way to water that. I'll, I'll get with Mr. Spivey and we'll, we'll make that happen.
All right, thanks.
COVID-19 update. I'll start with our employees. On Friday, if we would have come to work, we would have been minus 47 employees on Friday. Today, we were down to 22. So last week kind of ran that, you know, if you understand the guidelines now, you're out for five days, and after your fifth day, you come back. We had a lot of people come back to work today. A lot of people wear masks for the week this week. So hopefully, we kind of hit the crest and we're on the downswing, and we'll stay on that downswing. Upcoming Friday, as we just said, commissioners, well, actually, it's Thursday and Friday. Thursday night at 6 o'clock, we'll start the commissioners' annual board retreat. Representative Salz will be there, and we'll discuss legislative matters with him. Plus, we'll be having discussion on our strategic plan. And then on Friday, we have several visitors. We have First Health coming to discuss EMS. We have the community college president coming to discuss the community college. And we also have Mr. Randolph, who has left, coming to discuss their budget for the coming year. And then we have our discussions with our departments and then our final discussion with the board. It's an exciting time to just talk about finances for the county because we, we are projecting some very good things, we believe, for the county. So it's a lot better to have the type of discussions we're going to get to have on Friday than those ones I had to have 10 years ago or so with the board about where we were going to cut. And that was quite a turnaround in the 10 years from, from back then. So look forward to the meetings on Thursday night and Friday. Be happy to answer any questions the board has any. Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the manager? I do have one that's OT Sloan. Santiago, when we took the tour out there, we were talking about small rectangular fields on the backside of the T-balls. Do you recall that conversation?
Oh, yes, sir.
Oh, okay. When we took a tour, OT Sloan. Yep. Right. I've had some individuals approach me why we don't have some small rectangular fields. And I'm sitting there in the back of my mind going, oh, I remember that.
We did a, just a background, we did a quick walkthrough with Joseph Lespring, sir. And where we did the T-ball complex, the four little T-ball fields behind that area, there's a space big enough to put two Pee-wee football fields, just small Pee-wee football fields. So that's what, that's what you referenced, sir.
Right, correct. Is that on the plans for the phase?
No, sir.
It can be?
Yes, sir.
We probably want to look at it.
We'll add that to the list on Friday.
We need to.
Parks and Rec, how about that?
I know Joseph is working hard to get that plumbing and all the water and all stuff, sewer stuff brought into that T-ball complex, but that's definitely something to look at.
So I just wanted to refresh everybody's memory on that one.
You know, the first, the first engineering architectural firm we met with today on the multi-sports complex, they were talking about multi uses for even diamond fields and how they use the outfield for putting rectangle fields in. Matter of fact, if you do, I didn't know this until they showed me the design, but if you do it right, you can put two rectangle fields in an outfield of a, of a, of a, of a baseball field for Pee-wee soccer or Pee-wee football, which was, I had never seen that design before, but it was very interesting. So anyway, very exciting stuff, trying to, trying to figure out how to get more, more games being played.
Okay, commissioners' comments. I'll start with Commissioner Carver.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just really looking forward to Thursday and Friday. Looking forward to maybe picking each other's brains and open up some ideas for what our future might hold. I always appreciate the time to be able to talk, other than when it's a little bit less structured. I think that'll be fun. I appreciate it. I also want to respect the, the effort that we made tonight to listen to the Equity Task Force. And it, it's curious to me, I think it's a, an opportunity for us to maybe think outside of the box and see where, what we might do in that arena. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Connect?
Hope everything went, everybody was safe in that wonderful snow that we had. Other than that, good, thank you.
Commissioner LaValle?
Just want to thank our presenters we had today. Thank you to our staff for all the work they've put into our budget, budget weekend or few days that we have leading up to it. I'm, I'm excited for our youth council to begin, and that's all.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, sir. Just happy to be back this week. A couple of weeks ago, I was under the weather. Just glad to be back, looking forward to the retreat.
Commissioner Reeves?
Madam Clerk, I was here on the first Horton Pool vote. I wasn't sitting here, I was right over here. So mark me a president. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
We, a couple of good comments. Actually, Department of Health and Social Services, their goals are great. The only one they're failing on is because they don't have reports brought in or people willing for some of their services. So they're needing more people to register for their services in particular, one particular area. With that being said, they're under an audit process right now, and it's a 10-month audit process. And with that process, very few counties are passing that, that our Department of Social Services, Health and Social Services passed them with flying colors. They got one more. They got one more month, they're, uh, taking a deep breath and letting it out, uh, but everything's looking good on that, so we, we got to be proud of that. And, um, you know, you, not many committees, when you go to, you hear of employees coming back. Uh, they tried other counties and, uh, they, they're just elated to, to be coming back to our county, and I think that speaks volumes of our county and the things we're doing for our county. And with that being said, so many of our county employees, uh, have came to me and appreciated the Christmas bonus we gave, so, um, I think we did good in that.
Premium pay.
Premium pay, premium pay.
I'm sorry. We gave them premium pay. Yeah, premium, I'm sorry. I, I call things with, I see them, so, but, uh, yeah, premium pay. But, uh, anyway, they are very appreciative of that, and, uh, our county's do, employees do a great job, and we appreciate them. So, thank you.
I want to say thank you as well. Um, I just wanted to reflect on the fact on the night of Friday, uh, January fourteenth, and I had a meeting with the sheriff earlier that day, but unfortunately, I got the notice that one of our deputies was shot at close range. The bullet hit his body camera and lodged into his protective vest. We are grateful that this incident did not result in any serious inju- injury to our deputy. Uh, we must commend the enormous self-restraint of our deputies in the apprehension of this criminal. The shameful fact is the individual is a convicted felon who was in possession of a firearm. Seems that only law-abiding citizens abide by the law, and for those who support leniency in the enforcement of justice, just remember, the number of repeat offenders who see weakness is such, in such leniency. On, uh, Friday, uh, that afternoon, I will not be able to attend the retreat. I will be in Raleigh attending a North Carolina Association of County Commission Board meeting, and I will be turning the reins over to our vice chair. I have a letter from the Johnson.
Chair, may I just add to your, what you were saying earlier, um, uh, the deputy is back at work, and so he's doing great.
Yes. As a matter of fact, when the sheriff in, talked to him at the emergency room while he was being treated, he was kind of excited to get back to work the next day, and the sheriff kind of gave him, no, you need to take a few days off. But that being said, um, Johnson County sent a, a letter to both Karen Howard, the chairman of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, and myself. It states, "Dear Chair Howard and Chair Smith, on behalf of the Johnson County Board of Commissioners, I am writing in support of your joint request to consolidate with the Capital Area Workforce Development Board. The Johnston County Board of Commissioners discussed this request at their meeting on January eighteenth and voted unanimously in support. As we understand, the Executive Committee of the Capital Area Workforce Development Board is also in support of this request. It is of the utmost importance that citizens and businesses have the best possible access to workforce development services, and this consolidation would allow for a more regional approach which would maximize economic development opportunities." And then, of course, they added, "If you require any additional assistance or wish to discuss this further, please do not hesitate to contact me," and it is signed, RS Butch Lauter, Jr., Chairman. And I just wanted to share that with everyone. I have nothing further.
Motion adjourned.
Motion made, made to adjourn. All those in favor signify by say and aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are now adjourned.